Recording in progress.
I'm going to turn my mic on and start over. All right, calling this meeting to order is Thursday, September 25th. This is a meeting of the City Council. I am Lance Davis. I use he/him pronouns. I will be presiding. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, this meeting of the City Council is being conducted via remote participation. We will post an audio recording, audio/video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. For those looking for information on this meeting or future meetings, you can register at the City Council website. The Zoom information is at the top of the agenda for any given meeting. And individuals with disabilities who need auxiliary aids and services for effective communication, as in CART or ASL, written materials in alternative formats, or reasonable modifications in policies and procedures in order to access the programs and activities of the City of Somerville to attend meetings should contact Adrian Pomeroy at -- you can call the main number and ask for Ms. Pomeroy. The extension is 2059, or email ada@somervillema.gov. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Burnley.
Here.
Counselor Said.
Here.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Bah. Counselor Davis.
Here.
With eight counselors present and two absent, we have a quorum.
Okay, two extra things. First, pursuant to our Rule 32, let it be known that this City Council salutes the flag of the United States of America, and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. Counselor McLaughlin is attending a big family event this evening, and Counselor Bah is in New York City for UN Climate Week. They both send their regrets and will follow up. I wanted to note that since Counselor Bah serves as the Vice President, to the extent that I need to step down and speak to any issue, as the next most senior in age, Counselor Scott will -- according to our rules, would sever the place, so if he steps up, that's why we're doing it that way. Good? Okay. All right, we begin our meetings with a moment of silence. Are there any counselors wishing to say a few words about members of our community tonight? All right, seen none. Would anyone in the chambers please rise as you are able for a moment of silence? Thank you. All right, Madam Clark, first item.
Item 1.3 is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 28, 2025.
Seen no objection. That is approved.
Item 2.1 is a citation by counselors Klingon, Strezzo, and Wilson commending the Somerville firefighters for their lifesaving actions in summer 2025.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, it is my honor to bring this citation forward, co-sponsoring -- actually, the Mayor's Office had reached out as well to see to it that the firefighters were recognized for their heroics that day, so this is a joint effort, myself, Counselor Strezzo.
Counselor Klingon, just so we can make sure everyone can hear you, let's give the folks, the firefighter themselves, a moment to come into the chambers here.
Okay.
Usually, there's a little bit of noise if that happens, so I want everyone to be able to hear your words. So I'll do a quick song and dance while we're waiting for everyone to join us, and then you can continue on. All right, Counselor Klingon.
Yes, Mr. President. Through you, as I was saying, it is my honor to bring forward this citation. Myself and Counselor Strezzo were reached out to by actually -- it was a joint effort between the Mayor's Office. We all wanted to make sure that the firefighters of Somerville were recognized for their heroics on the day of July 6. So I'm going to read a little recap of that day. I'm going to read the citation, and so let me just begin by saying, "I was on the scene that day, as was Counselor Wilson. And on that afternoon of Sunday, July 6, during a severe heat advisory, a devastating fire broke out on the third floor of a triple-decker on Wheatland Street. The blaze spread quickly, and despite the best efforts of tenants and neighbors soon engulfed much of the building, the fire's intensity forced the evacuation of not only the triple-decker but also the adjacent property, leaving a total of 27 Somerville residents displaced. Somerville Fire Department units arrived within minutes of the alarm and immediately went to work under dangerous and exhausting conditions, battling both the blaze and extreme heat. Firefighters acted with speed, precision, and courage, aggressively working to contain the fire and prevent further loss. Their response was supported by multiple companies called to the scene coordinating seamlessly to protect lives, neighboring homes, and the community as a whole. The incident did draw a large crowd of onlookers, many of whom witnessed firsthand the bravery and professionalism of the Somerville Fire Department. In the face of chaos, our firefighters demonstrated the highest level of dedication to public safety, reminding us of the extraordinary commitment they bring to their work every single day. We honor the men and women of the Somerville Fire Department, not only for their actions on Wheatland Street, but for the tireless service they provide to our city. Thanks to their courage and skill, an even greater tragedy was averted, and our community is deeply grateful." Now, I just want to add that that was my first inexperience. Like I said, this was a joint effort because we had a number of fires around the city, including one in Ward 7, which is why Counselor Strezzo wanted to make sure that there was recognition. But of course, I know we all appreciate the efforts of our fire department, and it was just a bad fire -- excuse me, summer for fires, and our firefighters responded accordingly every single time, making sure that loss was at a minimum and just putting themselves out there in harm's way. As I said, I was on the scene of the Wheatland Street fire, and it was a very chaotic scene. I do want to say that we, as a community, really didn't know how to come together. It was like regular citizens, making sure that all the firefighters had water. I mean, this was a community effort, but it was led by the bravery of the men and women of the Somerville Fire Department, making sure that they saved a cat. I mean, there was multiple amazing deeds done that day. So we wanted to make sure that for the summer and just in general, and certainly for the Wheatland Street, Thurston Street, and the town of the housing, and Clarendon Hill, that we recognized the firefighters of Somerville for their bravery and their commitment to our community. So that said, I'm going to read the citation. Unless, should I let colleagues speak first, or should we just go right to the citation? Okay. All right, so, citation reads as follows. Be it hereby known to all that the City of Somerville -- I'm sorry, that the Somerville City Council and the Mayor offer this sincerest commendations to the Somerville firefighters for their heroic actions in summer 2025, providing swift and lifesaving response to protect life and property in large fires on Wheatland Street, Pardahouse Avenue, and Thurston Street. Offered this 25th day of September, 2025, signed by the entire Council and her Madam Mayor. And with that, I'd like to present this to the President of the Union.
Whoever would like to step forward, please. And -- Or all of yous, if you want to. Hurrah! All right, we'll do a five-minute recess so we can take some pictures. Yeah, absolutely. Please, go ahead. Just introduce yourself for the record.
Mike Jefferson, President of Somerville Fire Local 76, to the Council. Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate the respect that you give the men and women of the Somerville Fire Department. To everyone in the room that was working those fires, and to all the other fires that work and will continue to work, I'm extremely proud to represent them. They do a phenomenal job. Stuff I saw on the boulevard, you know, was just beyond what I can explain, people going above and beyond. Thurston Street, I wasn't there, but what I heard. Wheatland Street, I wasn't there, but the things that I heard. I'm truly honored to represent these men and women, and I just want to thank you all again. Thank you.
Before we take some pictures, I see Liaison Hutter would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge, as Counselor Klingon mentioned, this was a joint effort with the Mayor's Office. Unfortunately, the Mayor is ill today and could not be here, but she wanted to make sure I came up here and said, on her behalf, thank you to all the firefighters, really grateful for the efforts over the course of the summer and the bravery displayed. It's part of what makes our community so lovely, as the counselor said. So many people coming together, all of our staff and our wonderful firefighters, so thank you on behalf of Mayor Valentine. Thank you.
All right, let's take a brief recess to take some pictures.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I can slide it back. I didn't move fast enough. I'm not sure I can, so.
You're all dressed up. I'm on duty.
I'll take one for us. I'll get one for us.
All right. No, we got to zoom out. All right, a couple people like come over here. We're close, I promise, but we're not quite there yet. Maybe get in front, get some -- y'all, this is a lot. All right, we got you. All right, no, I don't got you. Have to zoom out. Uh-oh. Stay there, stay there. Thank you. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you. Nice work. Nice work. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, I'll call this meeting back to order. Thank you. Madam Clark, the next item.
The next item then will be item 3.1, a grant application from Eversource to install a total of six feet of conduit in Warwick Street from utility pole 357 over 2 to a point of pickup at 13 Warwick Streets.
All right, declare this public hearing to be open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item?
I have Jackie Duffy.
Jackie Duffy.
Hi, how are you tonight? Can you hear me?
Jackie, yeah, one more time.
Hi, it's Jackie Duffy from Eversource.
There we go, perfect.
Okay, we'd like to install six feet of conduit in Warwick Street to provide electric service to 13 Warwick Street.
Is there anyone else to speak on the item? All right, seen no one, declare the public hearing to be closed. Any discussion? All right, seen none, that item is approved.
Thank you.
Item 3.2 is a grant application from Eversource to install a total of 68 feet of conduit in Cedar Street from utility pole 55 over 4 to a point of pickup at 33 Cedar Street.
I declare this public hearing to be open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item? Jackie Duffy.
Jackie Duffy, Eversource, would like to install approximately 68 feet of conduit in Cedar Street to provide electric service to 33 Cedar Street.
All right, anyone else to speak on the item? All right, seen none, declare the public hearing closed. Is there any discussion? No, all right, that item is approved.
Thank you. Have a nice night, everybody.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 3.3 is a grant application from Verizon New England to install a total of 305 feet of conduit in Somerville Avenue from existing manhole 44 over 42 to a point of pickup at existing manhole 44 over 33.
Is there anyone here to speak on the item? All right, declare the public hearing open. Anyone to speak on the item? Sir, please introduce yourself for the record.
Yes, good evening, counselors. My name is Alexandra Lassimerro, M-A-R-R-E-O. I'm a resident ascending Cross Street in Marlboro, Massachusetts. I'm an employee of Pike, P-A-K-E, Telecom and Reuniversals LLC, an authorized contractor for Verizon New England Incorporated, and I'll be representing Verizon on the matter before you this evening. Verizon is hereby petitioning to place one new four-inch conduit starting from existing manhole 44 over 33, located at the intersection of Bow Street and Somerville Avenue, and to run approximately 305 feet along Somerville Avenue, ending at existing manhole 44 over 42, located at the intersection of Somerville Avenue and Hawkins Street.
Okay, is there anyone else to speak on the item? Okay, seen none, declare the public hearing to be closed. Any discussion? All right, seen none, that item is approved.
Item 3.4 is a grant application from Verizon New England to install a total of 385 feet of conduit in Bow Street from existing manhole 44 over 32 to a point of pickup at existing manhole 44 over 33.
I declare the public hearing to be open. Anyone here to speak on the item? Go ahead.
Alexandra Lassimerro, Pike Telecom, Verizon Contractor. Verizon is hereby petitioning to place one new four-inch PVC conduit from existing manhole 44 over 32, located at the intersection of Bow Street and Walnut Street, and running approximately 385 feet towards and terminating at existing manhole 44 over 33, located at the intersection of Somerville Avenue and Bow Street.
All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak on the item? All right, seen none, declare the public hearing to be closed. Any discussion? All right, that item is approved.
Thank you. Item 4.1 is an order by Counselor Strezzo that the Director of Health and Human Services inform this council which school buildings have menstrual products available and which school buildings have inoperable menstrual product dispensers and when they are scheduled to be replaced.
Counselor Shazza.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back at it about menstrual products because the boxes that are to dispense free menstrual products are jamming or are nonusable, and the students have to stick their hands way up there into the cogs and levers to actually get the products, or you don't get one, so the free products are just sitting in there. We've had this discussion before, nothing's been done since it was discussed last year, so let's talk about it again. Can you please send us to the Buildings Committee?
School building facilities and maintenance, I'd like to sign on. Counselor Wilson would like to sign on. Counselor Said, and that'll be referred to, approved and with the copy sent to school buildings, facilities, and maintenance. Next item.
Item 4.2 is an order by Counselor Strezzo that the Commissioner of Public Works discuss with this council the recent snagging of overhead wires by a semi-truck that took out the electricity in Ward 7 and what plans have been put in place to prevent a similar occurrence.
Counselor Shazza.
Oh, curses purses, the name of the streets which were on the original order aren't on this one, but we'll talk about it. So, what the traffic patterns, because mobility should be discussing this as well, I believe. So, last month, a semi-truck, I mean, this is a CVS semi-truck that was about to make deliveries in Davis Square, took a shortcut through a very, very tiny side street. So, and along the way, along the side street tiny turn, which a semi-truck can't do on a tiny street, took out an electric pole and the electricity of the neighborhood. And I'm sure you, colleagues, you all knew about this, because we've all heard about it. And so, what we've ascertained through all this is that the semi-truck was using a different traffic pattern, of course, was going down Broadway and not going the, you know, main street road that you would assume it would take to make a delivery of a semi-truck amount of delivery to Davis Square. And there are numerous impacts on this, including the fact that the residents have to pay out of their own money to get things back in line and back in service and their electricity and things back up, and that's going to be an ongoing situation for them. So, the impact of the neighborhood is still going to happen, and I'd like to discuss this to just send it on to committee.
So, Public Utilities, Public Works, sound right? All right, very well, that is approved with the copy sent to Public Utilities, Public Works. Oops, sorry, Counselor Klingon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I just want to add to this that there is a phenomenon too whereby the wires, when it's really windy, they can get stretched. I'm not saying this is a situation in this -- stand situation, but on my street, one of the garbage trucks that go down my street every single week, all of a sudden, one day, grabbed onto one of the wires that hadn't been changed, nothing had happened, except I believe the wind had sort of stretched them out just enough that it snagged the truck. So, just something for everybody to be mindful of, that these wires do, you know, they can become lowered on their own through wear and tear, wind and other natural forces, but nonetheless, it ripped the pole right off my landlady's house, and we didn't lose power, luckily, but it's just one of those things that I feel for those people, that we were lucky in that situation, but certainly trucks coming down our streets and low-hanging wires are a bad combination. So, happy to talk about it in committee. Thank you.
Counselor Shazza.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, to Counsel Klingon, thank you so much for recognizing the ongoing pattern of the dangling wire saga and bringing it on to 2025. Yes, there still are plenty of dangling wires that aren't addressed, some low-hanging, some windy, and then just good thing, and some that construction sites and subcontractors just don't do a good enough job respecting our community and doing the right thing and lifting them higher, et cetera. Thank you.
All right, so that is approved with the copy to Public Utilities, Public Works. Next item. All right, let's do this, let's do the next one, this is the last of Counselor Strezzo's items, and then since she's all wound up and ready to go.
I'm all ready.
Have at it.
For me, I was on alert that I --
Next item, please.
-- to do. Item 4.3 is a resolution by Counselor Strezzo that the administration discuss with this council its recent press release announcement of a home rule petition to expand procurement opportunities for disadvantaged businesses.
Counselor Strezza.
Thank you. I know we're going, that the administration will be discussing this with us, and we saw the press release in our inboxes this week. I wrote this, this agenda item so that we could continue on the conversation and learn more about the implementation of this in Housing and Community Development. That was my goal, to write this, to keep the, to make sure that there is continued intention and a strategy and an actual plan on how we're going to implement this. And I'd like the Directors of the Departments to come to Housing and Community Development to talk about it.
Okay, so Counsel Shazza, I think the HRP itself is in legislative matters, so I'd be inclined to keep these together. Well, we do have, you know, the home petition itself is in legislative matters, so we'll be talking about the issue there. I'm willing to listen to an argument to also send a different --
All right, Mr. President, I'm always ready for that. So, the goal of this is the getting into more of the weeds of, okay, we have the home rule petition in legislative matters, sure, and that's really important, but on the other side of that, the goal of this is the longer conversation of how do we, what is the strategy for this next six months, year implementation? And this wasn't designed to be discussed immediately in HCD. I have no intention of putting this on the agenda until, of course, after it passes the State House through the HRP, but it was more just a bookmark to come back to the conversation when it does. No?
Yeah, I hesitate, just because I, for no other reason, just to avoid confusion from members of the public who might care deeply about this item, to make sure that they're not, you know, expecting there to be a conversation and then we have to wait for a home rule petition. I do think that certainly, you know, if and when a home rule petition is granted, then yeah, a conversation about it in that committee makes perfect sense.
If you really feel strongly about it, I can, we can place on file and I can resubmit it. That's fine. I'm afraid that I just don't, with ongoing changes happen, this is, this is an important conversation and an important issue, and I don't want it to get lost in a shuffle. So, the goal was really to make sure that it is bookmarked, that we will in time come back to, because we have to, it's an agenda item now. I do not intend to put it on the agenda in HCD in the next couple of years. So, the impact of the neighborhood is still going to happen, and I'd like to discuss this, to just send it on to committee.
So, Public Utilities, Public Works, sound right? All right, very well, that is approved with the copy sent to Public Utilities, Public Works, oops, sorry, Council Stre, Council Clandon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I just want to add to this, that there is a phenomenon too whereby the wires, when it's really windy, they can get stretched. I'm not saying this is a situation in this stand, situation, but on my street, one of the garbage trucks that go down my street every single week, all of a sudden, one day, grabbed onto one of the wires. That hadn't been changed, nothing had happened, except I believe the wind had sort of stretched them out just enough that it snagged the truck. So, just something for everybody to be mindful of, that these wires do, you know, they, they can become lowered on their own through wear and tear, wind and other natural forces. But nonetheless, it ripped the pole right off my landlady's house, and we didn't lose power luckily, but it's just one of those things that I, I, I feel for those people, that we were lucky in that situation, but certainly trucks coming down our streets and low-hanging wires are a bad combination. So, happy to talk about it in committee. Thank you.
Councilor Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, to Council Clandon. Thank you so much for recognizing the ongoing pattern of the dangling wire saga and bringing it on to 2025. Yes, there still are plenty of dangling wires that aren't addressed, some low-hanging, some windy, and then just good thing, and some that construction sites and subcontractors just don't do a good enough job respecting our community and doing the right thing and lifting them higher, et cetera. Thank you.
All right, so that is approved with the copy to Public Utilities, Public Works. Next item. All right, let's, let's do this, let's do the, the next one, this is the last of Councilor Strezzo's items, and then, since she's all wound up and ready to go.
I'm all ready.
Have at it.
I was on alert that I-
Next item, please.
-to do. Item 4.3 is a resolution by Councilor Strezzo, that the administration discuss with its, this council its recent press release announcement of a home rule petition to expand procurement opportunities for disadvantaged businesses.
Councilor Strezzo.
Thank you. I know we're going, that the administration will be discussing this with us, and we saw the press release in our inboxes this week. I wrote this, this agenda item so that we could continue on the conversation and learn more about the implementation of, of this in Housing and Community Development. I mean, that was my goal, to write this, to keep the, to make sure that there is, there is continued intention and a strategy and an actual plan on how we're going to implement this. And I'd like the directors of the departments to come to Housing and Community Development to talk about it.
Okay, so Councilor Strezzo, I think the, the HRP itself is in legislative matters, so I'd be inclined to keep these together. Well, we, we do, we do have the, you know, the, the home petition itself is, is in legislative matters, so we'll be talking about the issue there. I'm willing to listen to an argument to also send a-
All right, oh, I'm, I'm, Mr. President, I'm always ready for that. So, the goal of this is the, getting into more of the weeds of, okay, we have the home rule petition in legislative matters, sure, and that's, this is really important. But on the other side of that, the goal of this is the long, longer conversation of how do we, what is the strategy for this next six months, year implementation? And this wasn't designed to be discussed immediately in HCD. I have no intention of putting this on the agenda until, of course, after it passes the State House with the, through the HRP. But it was more just a bookmark to come back to the conversation when it does. No?
I, I, yeah, I hesitate, just because I, if, for no other reason, just to avoid confusion from members of the public who might care deeply about this item, to make sure that they're not, you know, expecting there to be a conversation and then we have to wait for a home petition. I do think that certainly, you know, if and when a home petition is, is granted, then, yeah, a conversation about it in that committee makes perfect sense.
If you really feel that strongly about it, I can, we can place on file and I can resubmit it, that's fine. I'm afraid that I just don't, with ongoing changes happen, this is, this is an important conversation and an important issue, and I don't want it to get lost in a shuffle. So, the goal was really to make sure that, that, that it is bookmarked, that we, we will in time come back to, because we have to, it's an agenda item now. I, I do not intend to put it on the agenda in HCD in the next couple of months, it is certainly until it is. But your call.
Yeah, so I, I think, I, thank you, Madam Clerk, I agree. I, I think, given the, the nature of the way this is worded, I, I just want to avoid confusion. We have our legislative liaison here, if, if, you know, the administration's made a note of the desire to have that conversation, you know, if, if we have a home petition approved by the end of the calendar year, then great, if not, anything that was submitted would expire anyways, and we'd need to resubmit something. So, either way, it might be opportune to put a very, a more precise item about the exact issues, it, when that, a discussion is ripe, and we can send it to that committee at that time, if that's okay with you. I think that, I think, that would, I really don't want to send two items that have to do with a home petition to two separate committees. Put it, put it that way.
Mr. President, that's the way your brain must organize that. I respect that.
Thank you. I appreciate your understanding.
Absolutely. I will write a note to resubmit it at a later time, and I, I am excited about the conversation on this item. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. So, we'll mark that approved. Okay, so we will now take item 7.1 out of order, and just as a reminder, this is an executive session. I don't anticipate, and I'm told from others that they don't anticipate this to be a very long executive session, so don't go anywhere. Clean up your dinner dishes, maybe get another beverage out of the fridge, come on back. We're going to be back here before you know it, for the rest of our exciting agenda, at which point we'll take up the Finance Committee report, item 6A, and then items 7.4 and 7.7 out of order, and then go back to our regular items. So, do we have someone from the Law Department here to speak to the appropriateness of going into executive session for this item? Thank you, please approach.
Mr. President, would you prefer that I read the item first?
Yeah, probably makes sense to read the item first, so people know what the heck we're talking about.
Item 7.1 is a request of the mayor, requesting that this council convene an executive session to discuss the proposed settlement of opioid litigation involving the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy case.
And Council Peaks, introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, through, through you, Mr. President, Jason Peaks, Assistant City Solicitor. This is a, this would directly impact the settlement negotiations of ongoing litigation in which a way that, discussing it in an open session would be detrimental, so yes, it would be appropriate for executive session.
All right, very well. Remind you, vote to go in executive, yes. All right, have a roll call vote to go in executive session.
On the motion, Council Wilson.
Yes.
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 Council Burnley.
I.
Yes.
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 Council Davis.
Yes.
With eight councilors present and two absent, that item is approved, and the council will enter.
All right, we'll be back in a flash, hopefully.
It was.
So, why, is that saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I have.
Is there, I mean, just let me know when you're ready for that.
Oh, okay, we will do. I don't have specific language yet, but it is on my radar, and I have no opposition to it.
How you doing? Except for maybe.
True. I'm about, we have to process.
That's actually exactly what I'm trying to say.
Exactly.
I'm hurt.
Oh.
That's the transcript.
Signature.
Please put the signature to.
I mean.
I have told you this.
Did you ever?
I'm actually, I don't know.
Yes.
I'm not.
People.
I'm just trying to.
It's called.
It's a, it's a, it's a common thing.
And it's possible.
It's certainly a really good point.
See, just look at the-
It's certainly.
I love. Stop, eight, six, seven, eight, nine, five.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. I appreciate. Yeah, so let's, let's talk about. It's, 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 We then talked about the update that we received on two of Council Burnley's items on UASI grants and strings that have been attached to those by the federal government. In a nutshell, we're still in wait-and-see mode with the state about some parts of that, but the committee members were united in agreement that our values are not negotiable and that we should be absolutely clear with the public that any recent approval of UASI grants have come from prior fiscal years, and therefore they did not have any of those problematic requirements attached to them. So, we did keep those two items in committee just for further updates since it is still a fluid situation. And finally, we got the requested report from the Director of Finance on stabilization funds, but we kept that order in committee as well just so its originator, Council Mba, could participate in the discussion. So I'll ask the committee report be accepted as submitted.
All right, thank you. On the report, Council Burnley.
Thank you. I just wanted to go a little bit more in-depth on the UASI grant items that they submitted that we discussed. The council received a memo from law regarding where we currently stand on those. Essentially, the federal administration has added new national priorities that require, that potentially could require pending litigation, Illinois v FEMA, require communities that take these federal grants to put at least 10% of that money toward cooperation with federal immigration enforcement. I wanted to ensure that we were not obligated to do that, which we are not thus far. As I mentioned before, there is federal litigation pending to determine whether that leveraging is legally viable. If it turns out that it is, there's a couple of different pathways forward. I mean, there's three acceptable ways to comply with that, one of which is through information sharing, which through BRIC, the Boston Regional Intelligence Center, which the city is already participating in, potentially could already be satisfied those requirements Although, which is not to say frankly that information sharing through BRIC is harmless either, but I just want to make it very clear that if these funds are requiring our community to violate our own sanctuary city laws, that is a conversation that this council should take very seriously and determine through the administration, with the administration, what our strategy for that will be. That's a conversation that should include the council, the administration, our JPOC, and be holistic about what information sharing we're already doing and what would be required under these new impositions from the federal administration. So, just to be clear, it's not happening yet. I imagine that we will get an answer on this relatively soon, so just want to put that out there.
Okay, thank you, Council Burnley. See no discussion on the report. The report is approved, and that puts five items before us for a roll call.
That is correct, Mr. President. Four of them are related generally to 299 Broadway, and if the council is so inclined, can take those up together.
Any objections to taking the 299 Broadway financial items up together? All right, see no objection, let's do that.
So, these are items 25-1382, the discontinuance of a portion of Sewell Court, item 25-1383, the partial termination of the city utility easement on Sewell Court, 25-1400, an order of taking for the acquisition of Lot 3 at 299 Broadway for municipal purposes including parking, and item 25-1433, temporary and permanent easements over Lot 3 of 299 Broadway in favor of 299 Broadway Property Owner LLC. On those items, Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Mba.
Council Davis.
Yes.
With eight counselors in favor, none opposed, and two absent, those items are approved. And the next item now before this council is going to be item 25-1411, a bond of $4,300,000 to appropriate for the design of the Morrison Avenue Linear Storage Sewer Separation Project. On that item, Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Mba.
Council Davis.
Yes.
With eight counselors in favor, none opposed, and two absent, that item is approved.
All right, very well. Next out of order items, I think 7.4 and 7.7 we can take up together, although we need to take a vote on one of them separately. Do I have that right? All right, so let's take those up together.
Item 7.4 is a request of the mayor requesting approval to appropriate $2,286,090 from the Salary and Wage Stabilization Fund to the Police Department Other Lump Sum Payments Account to fund retroactive payments in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement with the Somerville Superior Officers Association. And item 7.7 is a request of the mayor requesting the appropriation of $97,160 from the Salary Contingency Account to various Police Department Personal Services Accounts to fund a collective bargaining agreement with the Somerville Police Superior Officers Association.
All right, very well. I see representative from the Solicitor's Office here to speak on those items. Did you introduce stuff for the record?
Yes, thank you, Council President, through you. This, as the item says, is money to fund the retroactive components of the three-year agreement reached with the Superior Officers Union over the beginning of the summer, the prospective component appropriated in July over in the special session of the City Council. So if there's any questions about this financial component, I'm here to answer them. Council Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one question. I just want to be sure that these, so this is catch-up pay on settlement of contracts. I just want to make sure that this does not include the salary bonuses for body camera policy. Is that correct?
Council President, through you, yes, that's correct. They are not wearing body cameras yet, so there is no supplement for that.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? All right, we need a roll call on 7.4, I think, is that right?
Exactly right. On item 25-1496, $2,286,090 from the Salary and Wage Stabilization Fund to the Police Department Other Lump Sum Payments Account. On that item, Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Council Burnley.
Yes.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Mba.
Council Davis.
Yes.
With eight counselors in favor, none opposed, and two absent, that item is approved.
All right, very well, thank you. Back to our regular order of business.
Item 7.7.
Oh, 7.7. So without any discussion on 7.7, see none, that item is approved. Very good.
That does indeed return us to the regular order of business, which is item 4.4, which has been requested to be withdrawn and will be reflected in the minutes. It was submitted late for the agenda.
The withdrawal was submitted before the agenda could be.
Correct.
Very good. And I'll note from Council Mba that his intent is to resubmit that with some adjustments so that we didn't have to do it live.
Item 4.5 is a communication by Council Mba conveying a report of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Council Mba asked me to lay items 4.5 and 4.6 on the table so we can take those up when he's back here, since he's at the Climate Week.
Right. Item 4.7 is an order by Council Ewan Campen and Council Scott that the Director of Mobility develop and install quick-build safety infrastructure at the intersection of Webster and Prospect Streets.
Council Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you obviously to the Ward II counselor for cosponsoring this. This is the second, third, fourth, I don't know, you know, this intersection has been a nightmare forever. It is just the worst part of many, 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 many meeples' commutes. It's not safe for driving, walking, or cycles. Several years ago, we got close to having quick-build, but my understanding there were just kind of capacity issues of actually getting that implemented. There have been accidents recently, and I think we just really want to light a fire under this. We can't wait until we're ready to do the proper final reconfiguration of this. We need to get safety infrastructure in there really as soon as possible. Thank you.
Council Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, and of course, thank you to my colleague from Ward III for this. I couldn't have said it better. This is, we have tried to get action here over the years, and just to make it clear, it's not just the intersection of Prospect and Webster. It's kind of, that's kind of a bad description because Concord feeds into there and Newton feeds into there, and I believe it was just last night or two nights ago that there was a pedestrian that was struck there. So this is long overdue, and hopefully we can get to it.
Very well, Council Wilson would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Council Burnley would like to sign on? All right, so that item is approved. Do you want to send that to committee or?
Yeah, can we please send that to traffic and parking?
And parking.
Item 4.8 is an order by Council Ewan Campen that the Director of Mobility install a pedestrian light signal at the intersection of Vinyl Avenue and Highland Avenue.
Council Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me begin by acknowledging all the work that has gone in to making this crossing safer. This is obviously where high school students cross, but tons and tons of people cross. And I know that my colleagues on the council have also been carrying this load along with me as the Ward III counselor. So, there is now a crossing guard there. There are flex posts. There is a no-left turn coming out of the high school. All of those are major improvements, and yet it is still really, really, really dangerous. The traffic is just extremely bad in the morning and the evening and when school is being let out, and I can't really think of a solution except some kind of light there, whether that's the thing where people press the button and it blinks yellow, or whether that's a hawk signal, or whether we could actually get in a, you know, button-activated red light that truly stops traffic. It's just, you know, every day I think there are near misses, and occasionally, as we know, there are also not misses, you know, people have been hit there. So I'd ask that this please go to traffic and parking as well.
Okay, Council Strezzo.
Thank you. Yes, I believe that I spent over, what, a year talking about trying to get a crossing guard on this very intersection, and I'm very grateful that a crossing guard, yes, is there now. There was a temporary crossing guard, and it looks like there's a more permanent crossing guard there. One thing that can be helpful, if anybody has actually, like, seen the intersection in prime time, when this is happening, when school is happening, there is bumper-to-bumper traffic all the way up and down Highland Avenue. And it is very much like Frogger. And teenagers being teenagers don't always cross at the crosswalk that is painted, they often cross at the part of the other side of Vinyl going toward the high school that doesn't have the crosswalk. So teenagers are coming from, or maybe not just teenagers, pedestrians, all pedestrians, sometimes they're just crossing at both ends of that. One thing that I do think would be helpful is lowering the no-turning-left signs because I've heard from constituents that they don't see the no-turn-left sign. So I think affixing the no-turn-left sign to the actual stop sign could help because visually to the eye, there's about 20 different things that you can look at the same time, and in the construction happening with the memorial, the veteran memorials that with the fenced-off area, there's a lot to view at the same time. So I do think lowering the signs will help. But it is a bumper-to-bumper traffic area presently, and additionally, I think what could be helpful is at second crosswalk, at least acknowledging that people are still going to come from both sides to cross.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? See none? Do you want to send that one to committee as well? Council Ewan Campen?
Yes, let's go to committee. I'd be interested in hearing your response.
All right, that is approved and sent with a copy sent to traffic and parking.
Mr. President, waive the readings of items 4.9 and 4.10 and just with a copy to the Mobility Department.
All right, see no objection. Waive the readings of 4.9 and 10 with a copy to the Mobility Department. Approved and sent to, with a copy to.
Got it. Item 4.11 is an order by Council Klingon that the Director of Mobility install a solar-powered digital "Your Speed Is" display sign on Shore Drive westbound.
Council Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just send a copy to, I'm sorry, traffic and parking, please.
All right, Council Strezzo would like to sign on. Seeing the discussion, that is approved with a copy to traffic and parking.
The next item is going to be item 6B, a report of the Committee on Land Use, meeting on September 18th, 2025.
Council Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I submit the committee report as written.
Any discussion on the committee report? All right, see none, that item is approved.
Item 6C is a report of the Special Committee on School Building Facilities and Maintenance, meeting on September 15th, 2025.
Council Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. All members were present of both the School Committee and the City Council. Number of items were discussed. There were some great memos attached to the agenda. I'll just go through a few highlights. The items regarding the pool, there was a few, there was three. So Chief of Staff Spencer has been working with Parks and Rec to address the pool issues, also with the contractor that we use. There was a recommendation of, that the pool will be closed one day a week, or they're proposing the pool be closed one day a week to allow for necessary adjustments and maintenance. The day of closure is still being determined to minimize disruption. Director of Operations Yanni Segridis is exploring options to expand weekend hours to make up for that day. The memo was, excuse me, also outlined updates to lifeguard manual, including new procedures for testing pool chemicals. Chief of Staff Spencer also addressed the chemical spill in June caused by human error while refilling a tank of muriatic acid. The Department of Public Works has since installed a shut-off valve on the water hose to reduce the risk of leaks. You know, we had the Director of Emergency Management there who also was able to weigh in, who has really been kind of hands-on in a lot of different types of issues. Of course, that issue, a memo did go, you know, an email did go out to parents saying that there was essentially a chemical spill, which wasn't totally inaccurate. All the necessary precautions were taken to make sure that student safety was put first and foremost, so there was no fooling around with, oh, you know, how bad is this? It was handled very seriously with regards to, you know, it being chemicals and all. So, the pool is sort of somewhat a work in progress. There's a lot of attention being paid to it. Like I said, they may or may not, they're looking at closing one day and expanding hours on the weekend. The other issue was regarding a contingency plan. If the school building, if a school building wants to go down, there is a great memo. I mean, it's a plan. It may not be an awesome plan, but it's a plan, and the plan would be that the TAB Building, all the staff in the TAB Building that's currently there would be moved out, and that would be made into a school, which it already is set up for as a school. So there you have it. I don't know if they'd go to, you know, if everybody stopped working from home, or if people would go back to certain areas like the annex, but we asked for an emergency plan, and one was created. So that would handle that. A few of the other issues, items we kept in committee had to do with the plan to accommodate Somerville Public School students to mitigate disruption to students, families, and staff if a school building isn't available. A lot of those items are being discussed as part of an MOU with the School Committee, so we kept those in committee until the MOU is completed. And that's it. I ask this, this report be accepted as submitted. We, actually, I'm sorry, well, there's a great update also, if anyone watches the video, on the MSBA process, and kind of where we are, and there's a great sort of timeline attached. The mayor's office did do a great job of putting together a really visual and nicely-laid-out timeline. I ask that this report be accepted as submitted. Thank you.
All right, very well, thank you. I just want to note and echo what the good chair said. The report, which I've now seen twice, having sat through it on the School Committee and in this committee, on the things that have been done so far is really impressive, and so I want to extend my gratitude to everyone in the administration that's been working hard to keep up on the preventative maintenance and hopefully help us avoid to get into the type of situations we've been in. Council Klingon.
Thank you for sending it back to me. I should have mentioned that a good portion of the meeting was sort of a presentation by the DPW as well as IAM on what they accomplished over the summer months, which is, when you talk about the, I shouldn't even say months, it's basically like six weeks. It was an immense amount of work that they, they have a punch list. You can see all the different things that they were able to do, and so that was on full display. We got to really.
so that was on full display. We got to really kind of hear and appreciate everything that's been done. That was one of the highlights of the meeting that I meant to mention. Thank you for bringing that up, by the way.
Of course. The slide deck is, for that is attached, and it's, it's great. So credit where credit is due. All right, any discussion? All right, see none, that item is approved.
The next item then will be item 7.2, a request of the mayor, requesting approval of a home rule petition to raise the maximum amount of fines for violations allowed by Mass General Law Chapter 40, Section 21D.
You're here. That'll be sent to Legislative Matters.
Item 7.3 is a request of the mayor, requesting ordainment of an amendment to Section 7 and Section 1-11B of the Code of Ordinances to require notification to tenants of parking permit restrictions in transit areas.
Refer to Legislative Matters.
Item 7.5.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to waive the readings of items 7.5, 7.6, and 7.8 to 7.14, and ask that those be sent to Finance.
See no objection. Those items are sent to Finance. Counselor Ewan Campan.
Thank you. I, my name, yes. I would like to refer 7.15.
We're waiving the readings as well?
We're waiving the readings as well. Thank you. 7.15 to 7.22 and 7.26, and refer those to confirmation of appointments, please, and 7.23, 24, and 25 to recommend approval tonight.
All right, so 7.15 through 7.22 and 7.26, Counselor Ewan Campan moves to approve this evening.
No, those go to committee, please.
I got it backwards. Sent to committee, thank you. Sent to committee. See no objection. Those will be sent to confirmation appointments. And waive the readings of 7.23, 24, 25. Do we want to hear those? Why don't we hear those?
Yeah.
7.23, please, ma'am.
Item 7.23 is a request of the mayor, requesting confirmation of the reappointment of Richard Scanlon to the Board of Assessors.
Move to approve. See no objection. That item is approved.
Item 7.24 is a request of the mayor, requesting confirmation of the reappointment of Michael Flynn to the Board of Assessors.
Move to approve. See no objection. That item is approved.
Item 7.25 is a request of the mayor, requesting confirmation of the appointment of Nick Pittman to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Move to approve. All right, see no objection. That item is approved.
Item 8.1 is an officer's communication from the city clerk conveying block party licenses issued.
Woo-hoo, block parties. You want to call in one out? No? Go over, look at the list. We love block parties. If you're not on the list, apply for a block party. They're great. That is placed on file.
Item 9.1.
Counselor Wilson? Nope, sorry, Counselor Burnley.
There we go. Through the chair, I'd like to move the item 9.1, go to license of permits, and waive the readings of items 9.2 through 9.7, as well as 10.3, and ask that they be approved tonight, with one shout-out to Zinnia Smith for keeping poetry alive in Somerville.
You're here. All right, so Counselor Burnley moves to waive the readings of 9.2 through 7, and 10.3, and approve those this evening. See no objection. Those items are approved, and then sending 9.1 to committee. All right, see no objection. That is sent to license of permits.
Item 9.8 is a public communication from Katie Pilat submitting comments regarding bike lanes.
That item is placed on file.
Item 10.1 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the Director of the Office of Immigrant Affairs discuss with this council the most critical content to include in an immigrant defense know-your-rights document, and how best to make it available in the preferred languages of residents.
Counselor Burnley, can you read the following item as well?
Item 10.2 is a resolution by Counselor Burnley that the mayor allocate funds for citywide immigrant defense know-your-rights mailing and make this document available in Somerville's most prominent languages.
Counselor Burnley.
And through the chair to the clerk, if you would not mind, if you could also pull up the attachment.
While, while we're doing that, so just as a, as a general reminder, not to this specific point, with supplemental items, we're going to really try and follow the rules of open meeting law, meaning if something is, has a, was unanticipated, then it's appropriate for supplemental matters. Or if there's a timeliness to it being approved, then it's appropriate for a supplemental item. If not, we don't want to take any, I'm going to encourage that we don't take any actions on items that were in the supplemental agenda. In this case, if we're referring these to committee, then they will be properly noticed on a committee report, if public can see and read them. So no, no objection there, from my standpoint, as assuming that that's the direction we'll end up going. Then that's going to be our approach, just as a reminder. Still would like to generally sort of move away from the practice, but certainly with this topic, I would imagine there's always a degree of urgency. And so, you know, as I said, no, no objection, but I will recommend that these go to committee, just so they can be properly noticed before we dispose of them in one way or the other. We have the, have the attachment up? Very good. Counselor Burnley, back to you.
Thank you. Through the chair, as the first item notes, my goal is for there to be a discussion on these items with the Director of Office of Immigrant Affairs, who I have at least briefly discussed this idea with. There's a, there's another one in English of what we're seeing on the screen as well. But this is, these are images of know-your-rights mailers that were sent out to every household in Providence, Rhode Island, earlier this year, back in June, as an attempt to equip their residents with the necessary knowledge to protect their constitutional rights. Those rights are changing by the day, it seems, and quite, they feel under attack, frankly. I think it's really important that every member of our community feels equipped with this knowledge, that they have, know the best practices as to what they're allowed to do, how they're allowed to respond if federal agents ask them questions, stop them, as has been the case in Somerville far too often as of late, and that they know what their rights are when they see such actions happening in our community. These examples from Rhode Island, from Providence, are, in English and in Spanish, they contain some information about people's rights. They even, if you look in the bottom left-hand corner, contain a portion of the, a document that can be cut out and slid under a door in case there was someone on the other side of that door who, a community member does not want to let into their home, or isn't worried, may deprive them of their rights, including their right to due process. I've been making some noise about this for a while now. I think it's really important that we try to make sure that every person in our community is aware of their rights, and I think the best way to do that would be through a citywide mailing to every household, as was done in Providence. Now, the content of that mailing, I think, is very debatable. What should be in there? What would be most helpful? What information should not be in there? I would love for this council to discuss that with the, our Office of Immigrant Affairs, so that they, and some of their, with their legal and personal experience, can help advise us on what that would be. And I've been told thus far that, you know, could be a good idea. Let's talk, let's get communications in here as well. So I want to send this off to committee, want there to be a good conversation about it, but I, I think it's important that there is an allocation for this effort within FY '26. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson and Scott would like to sign on. I'll sign on as well. Any discussion? Counselor Ewan Campan would like to sign on. Discussion? Counselor Said, sign on? All right, very well. So Counsel, Equity Committee? All right, very well. Those will both be referred to, approved and referred to the Equity Committee. Any objection to approving them and sending them along? No? Okay, yeah, let's approve those and send them along to Equity. Thank you.
The next item will be item 10.4, a public communication from Bill Valetta submitting comments regarding item 24-1344, in order that the Director of Finance provide a comprehensive accounting of all stabilization accounts.
That is placed on file. Do we want to copy to Finance, or? It's already in Finance. Okay.
Item 10.5 is a public communication.
Sorry? You want to copy, yeah, copy the comments to Finance to go along with the item that's related to? Yes, very well. Let's have a, yeah.
Speak on that item. Counselor Scott. Thank you. Normally, we do just place these on file, but I wanted to highlight this. It was an absolute corker of a 17-page memo from prestigious, brick-bottom Ward 2 resident, Bill Valetta. Thank him for his service and his expertise here, and I certainly hope it can go into Finance for just some discussion of both the incredible documentation there, and also some of the courses of action he recommends. So just wanted to give a big shout-out. Thank you.
Very good. All right, copy to Finance.
Got it. And item 10.5 is a public communication from Crystal Huff submitting comments regarding items 25-1445 and 25-1446, orders regarding immigration and customs enforcement and ShotSpotter.
All right. Happy to do that. We'll send a copy to Public Health and Public Safety.
Is that where those items are?
It's probably, they're probably in Legislative Matters.
Let me see. 1, 3, 4, 4, oh, wrong one. And Finance.
Checking where the related items currently sit.
Items are both in Finance.
They're both in Finance.
Mr. President, I think those are Counselor Burnley's two orders, I'm guessing, if those numbers look right, the ones we kept in Finance. We can send it to Finance. I guess I would just say I'm not sure if we're going to get an update before the end of the year. We have only a few meetings left, which could just result in this being discarded at the end of the year. Just naming that as a possibility here.
I'm inclined to follow the general practice that if comments are related to a specific item, the comments, if they're going to go anywhere, ought to follow that item or those items. In this case, let's send a copy to Finance and, come what may. All right, any further items?
That brings us to the end of the agenda, Mr. President, and I see no further items before this council.
All right, very good. Short and sweet, folks. Counselor Wilson moves to adjourn. See no objection. This meeting is adjourned.